All right, welcome folks to our town council meeting. We'll call it to order if we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic that stands one nation under God in the visible liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call.
Here. Councilor Casey, on the time is councilor Casey, Councilor Foster. Mayor Kozinski.
Here.
Councilor Payanessa.
Here.
Councilor Rizzo. And Councilor Russell.
Here.
Councilor Deach.
Here.
There you have a form.
Okay, great. Thank you. So first up on our agenda tonight is some proclamations and I'm gonna go ahead and read the first proclamation and then we'll call the young lady up and we can present it to her. So Town Council, yeah, you know what? Yeah, you know what? Meet me up there. I'm gonna read this to you and then we'll have the photo up, okay? Town Council, Town of Berlin Town Council Proclamation, be it hereby known to all that the Town of Berlin recognizes Ava Leland for charitable work with Ava's lemonade stand. It was an amazing young lady who was diagnosed with cerebral palsy very early in life. Her family was told there was a good possibility she would never walk or talk. Obviously, you beat all those odds. Outstanding. Does a lot about you. Ava has always been a fighter and she began to walk around age three and talk at the age of six. Success was due to her own perseverance and the fact that she was surrounded and supported by her family and a wonderful team of doctors and therapists at Connecticut Children's Hospital. You started a lemonade stand the week of the Berlin Fair in 2021. You raised a thousand dollars and decided to make that stand an annual event. Sadly, I know you lost your dad just before the fair this year. We don't insist for that, so hear that. But you knew your father, right? You knew he would want you to continue with the lemonade stand and you could continue to help others and that's what you did. So over the last three years, you have raised an amazing amount of $6,000 and have donated all that to the so in recognition of your dedication, your charitable donations to those in need, the Town Council extends their thanks and gratitude to you. Congratulations on all you've accomplished in life so far. I know there's a lot more you're obviously. There we go. Look at that. Move over a little bit here, right? Do we wanna get, we wanna get the whole? Good? Congratulations.
Nice job, Ava.
Great job.
Great job.
I said cheer you.
Yeah, that's just. So wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Thank, thank everyone. Thank you all for being here and keep up the amazing work that you're doing. Okay, just have a couple other proclamations. One to our, well, one council member's on here, but we do have a couple departing council members and Casey is one of them. Unfortunately, we're sorry to see you go, but we have a proclamation for you, the Town of Berlin Town Council hereby known that we recognize Casey Foster. Casey has served with distinction on the Burlington Town Council from November 2022 until present, while in the council Casey served on the Rules and Procedures Committee, the Playing Fields Committee, the Fire Committee, and the Managers Evaluation Committee. In recognition of your service, Casey, to the Town of Berlin and many contributions you have made to improve the quality of life in our community, the Council hereby salute you, Casey Foster, and extends our best wishes for you for many years of health and happiness in your future endeavors. So, thank you for serving with us. It was fun.
Thank you so much.
Due to budget cuts, we couldn't frame it. Just but suitable for framing, yes.
I, I would just like to say Casey reaffirms my faith in the next generation, well, actually two generations from me, but as a political science major, she has plied her craft artfully here in town. I reminded minded of a quote when Jack Kennedy left us, we, they said, Jack, we hardly knew ye, but Casey, we hardly knew ye, but it was great to know you while you were here. Thank you for everything.
Yeah, congratulations, Casey. Excellent. And we have one for Donna, too. We will get that, we'll get that. I know she's not online. So, all right, so we'll put that aside here. And we'll move on. We have a an audience of citizens now. If anyone here wants to address the council on any issue before us tonight or, or anything now would be the, the time or on Zoom, if anyone has anything to tell us, yes. Yes, come on up. You have, yeah, you have to come to the mic and just name an address, please. Sorry, we gotta get that on the record. Sorry to make you do that.
Carol Courtney, 51 Sterling Drive.
Oh, hey, Carol. Welcome.
Thank you. I am here on behalf of the Kensington Garden Club. We would like to beautify Little People's Park and I just wanna thank the Board of Finance for approving what we'll be able to do in the future. So, thank you so much for doing that.
That's great.
If people don't realize, we've done other areas in town on a consistent basis. So what we set up will be ours to handle.
Great. Well, we're, we're, we know you've done great jobs and other things you've done, so we're happy to hear you beautify that area there once we can do the whole new park up there.
To get our approval.
Yeah, good. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Um, I have a couple handouts. I'm just gonna.
Sure.
Um, so my name is Karen Heemsoth. I live at Three Watch Hill. On October 12th, I attended the Person Rec Commission Meeting to advocate for two town improvement projects. I was told that the funding for Little People's Playground needs to be confirmed by, by this committee. And they suggested that we come here to like ask for the 200,000 to be allocated to Little People.
We did approve it already.
You did? Okay, all right.
And we approved it and it went to the Board of Finance already, right? Yeah, and they, and they approved it.
They did? Okay, awesome.
So we're, we're good to go.
All right, that's really exciting.
Woody's already on and he's gonna be banging nails tomorrow, yeah, so.
That is fantastic to hear. I know we were really excited about that.
Yeah.
All right, so I jumped on my second thing that I'd like to advocate for. So as a young family in town, I'd like to suggest a splash pad. I think especially with the prospect of Hubbard Pool perhaps closing, to not have something is quite a loss for our town. One of the documents I'm sharing with you, I compiled all the splash pads and the pools in our area and you'll just see that Berlin, if we really do lose our one pool, then we're down to one pool. And if you look at Rocky Hill, Newington, Southington, Glasson Berry and a bunch of other towns, like I kinda went all over and not just picked a couple, but like pretty much everybody that surrounds us, with the exception of a few, they have more than one, you know, pool or splash pad or whatnot. So I really thought it was important to come up here and say like, a lot of families are going out of town to get these services. And we go out, we've got playdates, you know, we're going to get lunch with our kids, coffee and ice cream, and we're staying in the town where we're at because you know, if I'm gonna go to Mikey's Place in Weathersfield, there's a great ice cream shop right there. I'd love to be able to go to Preleens and just stay in town or Provision State Coffee, but if I'm already gone and even inviting neighboring friends to the town, I really don't invite anybody, unfortunately, like I'm always going to Glasson, I'm going to Newington, I'm going to West Hartford. And for us to be able to say, hey, come on down to Berlin and see what we're all about would be really awesome. So I really just wanted to advocate for that and just kinda put a bug out there. I know a lot of planning and consideration that would take, but certainly just kinda getting the idea out there, at least letting you know. A lot of moms in town are talking about that, like on the Moms Facebook of Berlin site. So it's not just me, it's really just, you start chatting with people. We're really feeling like we'd like to have some more amenities in town so that we could kinda stay here and build community, get to know our neighbors. So we're not talking to other people in other towns, getting to know their kids and then saying, well, it'd be nice if our kids went to school together, it'd be nice if we lived down the street. So again, just building community. And thank you for the Little Peoples. That just, that's amazing. I'm so excited about that.
Well, thank you for coming in. Just so, so, yeah, we talked about the splash pad and you, you went to the Park and Rec meeting, right? So the pool, you know, obviously needs repairs. We didn't open it this year. That was based upon, you know, Park and Rec's recommendation on, well, it was attendance and then there was some repairs needed. So in light of that whole discussion, the splash pad came up. And I think, I know we've talked to Woody last time, but we, we think that location, rather than fix the pool, we would have to remove it, I guess, or maybe cover it, but that might be the location, the best location for the splash pad. We were looking at a couple different areas. That might be the replacement for it, which we thought would be a nice amenity for, you know, kind of on that side of town, you know, everybody can go wherever, but so that's, that is on the drawing board. We're gonna, we gotta do some more research and, but yeah, we're, we're headed in that direction, absolutely.
Fantastic to hear. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. Yeah, thanks for telling us. Anyone else? Yes.
Hi, my name's Kylie Stiefel. I live at 103 Love Drive. And I'm kinda going off of what Karen had to say and I'm leaving out my Little People's feel.
Well, it's, it's a happy moment. It's, it's approved. It's all good. Yeah, it's all good.
So I was at the meeting with Karen as well and her department. Start, I've been in town my whole life and now raising my children here. My stepfather grew up here and he and his family owns our restaurant for a number of years. So I'm really no stranger when it comes to Berlin. About two years ago, I started a Moms of Berlin Facebook page and I can reach over 800 people with a button, which has been really great. So I come here with lots of moms and parents kinda behind me with what I say, with what Karen says, with love. She's part of the group. And so I was kind of disappointed in the Park and Rec meeting that we went to. We were told to come to this meeting if we'd like to see any improvement in the town as far as parks go. So you'll, the Park and Rec Department, our town is lacking. I personally go to other towns and spend my money there, my husband's money to own mom. And I use their facilities and their programs and the boroughs not much, offer much as far as toddlers go or young children. And I am going to be a mom of almost three now and I enjoy getting out of the house and socializing with other moms and I find it important to bring my kids to socialize with other children, especially after COVID. I think it's very important for their development. So I'm kinda questioning, why do I need to step out of my own town to go and meet people in different towns? And I just don't know why Berlin doesn't have this ability to be Rex. I did print out some from the other towns, specifically Cromwell and Newington, because those are the towns that seem to be comparable to us. And you can kind of see here, I'm happy to pass them along. You know, they offer these programs that are not free of charge, but they are discounted for the presence of the town. And I just think it would be interesting if we could get something like that together. Again, not sure if it's the funding of Park and Rec or any more people. That's not my specialty. But I just think it would be really beneficial to the town and I do know a lot of moms would utilize it. I get questions all the time of, you know, does Berlin offer this? Is Berlin offer that? Like, no, well, I go to Cromwell or I go to Newington and I would love to be say like, yes, it's right here in town. You can just go down the street and.
What, like what, I haven't seen it yet, but what is it? Are they programs or are they, let me, let me see.
Like
Oh, okay.
They do story, like I know Libra has stories.
Yeah, yeah.
Music and story.
I see, yeah, okay. So this is just some pro, programming, some program funding. Yeah, yeah, gotcha, okay.
Again, would be really beneficial.
Sure.
Of course, free is great, but everything's not free. So
Yeah.
Minimal charge. I know many moms would love it and utilize that, so.
Well, that's, that, this, you know, some of this does not look like it would be, you know, that expensive, you know, to, to program. I will have to talk to, to, to Park and Rec, you know, and see what, what we can do. I mean, they're, they're, you know, in charge of these programs and of course they bring it to us for funding and, and things, but this does not look like, you know, these programs are not like, you know, million dollar new facilities or anything. But on a good note, on, on another happy note about things in town, you know, one of the things you folks have probably heard about the Community Center, Senior Center, we've been talking about that for a little while and, and one of the things, one of the options which we're gonna be discussing, we're actually gonna have a forum at the Senior Center next week, I think November 1st at 1 o'clock to talk about it again a little bit, but one of the options is the YMCA, because the YMCA does wanna build a building in Berlin. And that would be great for, you know, seniors, for everybody, people of all ages, right? Toddlers and whoever. So we will be talking to them about that. And that's, you know, that's certainly on the table. I mean, the Y, as you all know, is in town anyway. They do a lot of programming in town as well, so. But they are interested in building and we're interested in talking to them, so that's something worth. Oh, yeah. And with an indoor pool. They want, they wanna do an indoor pool. Yeah, yeah. Oh, there you go, yeah. So, yeah, so anyway, well, we appreciate that input and certainly can look into some of these things. They don't look, you know, cost prohibitive to me, but.
I know.
Yeah.
Are, are gonna try to reach out.
Yeah.
Personally.
Yeah.
Try to do a little meet and greet with them and see kinda where we can go and hopefully that gets passed along to you.
Yeah.
Again, we were told to come here, so.
Yeah, you're here. Yes. Well, no, it's good to hear from you and yeah, I would start with them and, you know, they'll hopefully develop some type of programming that you're interested in, hopefully, and then it'll just come to us for, for funding and approval. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's the way to go and more things, good things are coming in Berlin, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate that. Uh, any, anyone else in the audience? On Zoom? Okay, I think we're good with our audience of citizens. We'll go ahead and close you. Good night, folks. Yeah, thanks for coming. Oh, geez, that's amazing. That's just incredible. Okay, so we are on back to on our agenda here. Mayor's, Mayor's update, just real quick, we, we can talk about it, Roche, in your Town Manager's Report. The ballot box, remember, we, we'll, we'll discuss that then. We, we talked a little bit about the East Berlin Pool, so I'm glad, you know, we, we got to talk a little bit about that, talk about the splash pad. And then I wanted to mention that the, the Senior Center November 1st for, you know, we're talking about the Senior Community Center slash YMCA, so that's 1 o'clock, the Senior Center in November 1st, so we'll have a you know, larger discussion on that, which is good. So I'm glad that we got all that out there to the folks. So, yeah, all right, that's, that's, that's the update. We got, we got it all kinda done already. That's, that's, that's a good thing. So next is our consent agenda. We have, let's see here. We have what do we have? Eight items on here, accept donations. Towing $4,650 for the library. And they'll be deposited in different accounts used for books and downloadable content and all good stuff for the library. That's number one. Number two, approve waiving the police traffic control fees for the annual Christmas tree lighting in the, in the approximate amount of $1,745 and then approve waiving fees associated with cleaning up after the tree lighting experience. Let's hope it's not that dirty after the tree lighting experience, but hopefully it won't be, but that's a great thing. That's another item we'll approve in a moment, I think. Transfer the 24,000 to the spreadsheet to cover higher than budget expenditures and identified accounts, donations to the $1,300 to the Berlin Senior Center Agency Fund, accept donations for the Berlin Animal Control Donation Account for $315 and supplies valued at $485. Number seven is appropriate $1,865 to the sale of land, labor, materials revenue account. And the contractual services and project account in the Capital Nonrecurring Fund. And number eight is appropriate 2,300 to the sale of land, labor, materials in the, also in the Capital Nonrecurring Fund. These are, this is our consent agenda. I know the counselors have reviewed this ahead of time, so if we have no questions or comments, we'll go ahead and take a, a motion on this.
I move we accept the consent agenda as, as presented.
All right, thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions from the counselors? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. All right, on to our new business.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on the agenda is the 2023 Hungerford Nature Center Pumpkin Palooza. This one is taking place on October 20th and 21st, 191 Farmington Avenue. It's a fundraiser that the Hungerford Nature Center conducts every year. And the request here is to, they're requesting police traffic control and to waive the fee approximately $400 these two dates.
Okay, I think, I think we've done this before. They have that annually, right?
We normally have it in consent, but we pulled it out because of Council of each.
Yes.
Can reduce herself.
So.
Already took place then? Was last weekend? 20th and 21st?
Yeah.
Yes. So, yes, so we, I know we're familiar with this, so if there's any questions, if not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve waiving the police traffic control fees for the Hungerford Nature Center 2023 Pumpkin Palooza and an approximate amount of $1,200.
All right, second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I'm gonna abstain, Mark.
Okay, thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
If not, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And one abstention.
All right, thank you. Thanks. Item number two is a bid award for snow plowing town streets. I have Mr. Hearn on Zoom land to talk about this and the next item. Mike, over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, guys. Um, this is for, this was publicly bid and it's essentially for allowed, a large snowplow similar to our a large plow trucks for the town roadways. We had one bidder who submitted a bid of $200 per truck hour for the primary truck and $250 per hour for each spare vehicle. It's Stacks Construction who's here in town and they've actually done work for us the last couple of seasons. So we're recommending that we contract with Stacks to kinda fill in when we need it on, on the main routes.
Okay, thank you, Mike. So this went out to bid, right? Obviously, so.
Yes, it was publicly advertised.
Do this every year? Yeah, okay. All right. Questions for Mike? Anybody? Normal course of business for us when the winter, with the winter coming. Let's hope we don't need to plow that much snow this winter, but.
I, I just wanna say that these rates are pretty consistent. I'm surprised they haven't gone up more.
Oh, that's, okay, that's good. Yeah. Yeah, they do seem fairly reasonable, right? I know the insurance is expensive for these folks with their trucks, too, but. Okay, if we have no other comments or questions, we can go ahead and take a motion on this contract.
Move to authorize the award of snow plowing of town streets contract number 2024-04 to Stacks Construction Services LLC of Berlin for the bid amount of $200 per hour for primary vehicle and $250 per hour for a spare plow truck.
All right, thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none? Take a vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Then the item number three is
Thanks, Mike.
Again, for snow plowing.
Still here.
For cul-de-sac, the same group and we got a separate contract. You wanna add anything, Mike?
No, it's just the same, the same bidder came in. We had three bidders. It was public, publicly advertised. These are for the smaller plow trucks, like the pickup trucks in the F-550s, which do the cul-de-sacs and also we're gonna add a for Steel Boulevard, they have on-street parking diagonal, so we're gonna need some help to do some mop up in there with the smaller trucks. We had three bidders. The low bidder was Stacks Construction at $150 per hour for each prime, for the primary truck and $165 an hour for each spare truck.
Okay, thanks, Mike. And I, and again, I, as Charlie just said, I assume that's a, sounds like a good rate we're getting, so.
Yes.
That's great. And they're familiar with the town even better, so. Okay, any other questions for the Public Works Director?
No.
All right, hearing none, we'll go and take a motion.
Move to authorize the award of snow plowing of town cul-de-sacs and miscellaneous areas contract number 2024-03, Stacks Construction Services LLC of Berlin for the minimum amount of $155 per hour for truck and $165 per hour for each spare truck provided in addition to the two primary plow trucks.
All right, thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? All right, so moved.
Right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Item number four is a request to purchase a bus for the Senior Center. We have two buses and this particular one is a 2008 Ford Thomas Bus with 150,000 miles. We got it from the Red Cross, they used it. And it's unfortunately, you know, visiting Jimmy Sharp on a regular basis.
Oh, right, yeah.
So I have Mr. Simons there. He has some history and I'll turn it over to Jim.
Good evening. How is everybody?
Good. How you doing, Jim?
Good. So we have a senior bus that we put in for money to get a grant or a matching portion of the grant. Unfortunately, the grant did not come through. And we are in need of the senior bus. So Mr. Delaney was able to cobble together some funds to purchase a bus and we have that in front of you. The pressing issue is that if we do not have a purchase order and war, and purchase a bus now, we will be waiting till next year this time and end up with a 2006, which was year and a half, two years out. And I can't guarantee that the bus is going to make it that far. So by purchasing the bus now, we will get it sometime before 2025. And hopefully we can stitch the bus together and keep it going.
All right. Yeah, you, right, you told us about this bus last time, right? The, the problem.
You were at the Finance Board meeting probably or.
Oh, yeah, I was at the Finance Board. You mentioned it.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
I've been talking about it for a little while.
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor. This is Tina Doyle.
Hi, Tina.
I would like to add to Jimmy's comments.
Sure.
Regarding the bus, just so that you have background material. We provide transportation five days a week to approximately 175 residents. We have expanded our service area to include medicals in Plainville, Southington, Meriden, Newington, Cromwell, Rocky Hill, Weathersfield, you know, along with our regular transportation to town buildings, grocery stores. We use it for specialty shopping trips. We use it for lunch bunch trips. So the demand is high for transportation. At times, we do have to turn people away. We usually have two to three vehicles on the road every day, so the demand is there. And as Jimmy said, and Orosch has indicated, the bus is a 2008 purchase used previously from the Red Cross and it has gotten a lot of use out of it, but it is in time to replace it. And unfortunately, usually the 5310 Traditional Project Grant is available, but this year the DOT did not do the 5310 Traditional. It did the 5310 Nontraditional Project, which does not include the purchase of vehicles.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. That explains that. Thanks, Tina.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that's. Interesting.
Yeah, because when it does come up, I usually will apply for it.
Yeah.
I believe all three of our vehicles. The 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 newer bus, the Red Cross bus and our van all were purchased through the fifty-three-ten. So over the last, what, seventeen years or whatever. The the fifty-three-ten has provided eighty percent of the cost of those vehicles. The town has only had to pay. You know, twenty percent of it. So the town has saved quite a bit of money with those grants, but unfortunately, the grant is not available at this time.
Yeah, well, that that's good to hear from the, you know. Historical perspective. Okay, any questions, folks? Or Tina or? Jim? No, we're good? Okay, so we'll go ahead and take a motion on this.
Move to approve the transfer of two thousand one hundred and two dollars and sixty cents from the passenger cars account and capital nonrecurring fund. Twenty-one thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty cents from the highway truck account. And vehicle purchase fund and ten thousand dollars from senior trips account and the senior center activities funds. Senior Center Van account and capital nonrecurring fund.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? Take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved. Second motion?
Move to approve the purchase of one bus from Tasker Ford for an amount not to exceed. One hundred twenty-two thousand dollars, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars.
All right, thank you. Second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved. All right, well, that's great. I'm glad we found the funding. Now I guess we just gotta get the find the bus, right? Which is not as easy.
Year later.
A year later. That's incredible that we're that backed up with stuff, but that seems to be with all the.
After strike ends.
Yeah, that's true. I know. It's I know we've been facing that with everything, right? Police cars, fire trucks or what? Two years out, some of them and. But at least it's on its way now, so let's hope it's sooner than later, but.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Jim. Tina.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, guys.
Then the item number five is to schedule a public hearing. Or at least with the Berlin V and A telemonitoring. The amount is small. It's five hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents a month, but our charter requires us to. Schedule a public hearing. Since it's a multi-lease, but I'll just have Aleah give you a. Quick overview of what this wonderful equipment is gonna do for us. Great.
Hi, Aleah.
Hello, good evening, everybody. So just a little background. We do have a current contract with Clear Arch Health. Unfortunately, though, in the past, the V and A purchased the telemonitoring equipment and it's now defunct. And not usable, which is unfortunate. Telemonitoring equipment is vital signs equipment, including a blood pressure cuff, a pulse oximeter. The the scale so we can get their vital signs daily and keep better tabs on people who have certain diagnoses. It does also allow us to sometimes reduce the amount of visits we have to do because we have this equipment. So we're just looking to get a new lease to have updated equipment that is functional so we can provide the best service possible. And the budget for the old lease was six thousand dollars a year. So we're looking at a little increase, five hundred and ninety-four dollars a year. Increase, but with the lease of the equipment versus the purchase. We have a lot more options if there's upgraded technology or something fails. You know, the company will be able to correct that for us without having to come out of pocket. So. Hopefully, we'll be able to move forward with that and provide this really valuable service and it's an expected service in home care, so not having it is. A bit difficult at this time.
Okay, that sounds good. Is it? So do we know if do we like the cost as far as are they all the same, these monitoring services? Do we? Like check, you know, the marketplace?
Yeah, they're. Yeah, they're pretty. I didn't get like a multitude of them. We were working with this company for so long, the equipment. You know, will be really good. And we did look around. It's comparable, but I didn't get.
Okay.
Like formal quotes from several different places, but yeah.
But it's comparable to the.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's after? Okay, no, appreciate that.
I was gonna say, I'm looking at the rates just.
Yeah.
My experiences have held these.
Yeah.
Not out of the realm. It's.
Okay.
Pretty reasonable.
Oh, good. Okay, appreciate that. Research Aleah and Sandy. Okay, any other questions? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion to move this to public hearing.
Move to set a public hearing on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. To approve a lease. To approve a lease, a new five-year lease. With Clear Arch Health or ten telemonitoring units. Rolling six thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars. The remainder of this fiscal year. Twenty twenty-four and six thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars annually for the remainder of the lease agreement.
Second on that?
Second.
All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved.
Great, thank you, Aleah.
Thank you.
So number six, item number six is a approval request for New Era Technology and Frontier spending. As you recall, a couple of months ago, we had a lightning that. The police and we were out of commission for a couple of days with the PD telephones as well as the town telephones. So at that time, we informed you that Brian was working with Frontier and New Era. Come up with the solution that still have redundancy and a backup system. So he has worked with the folks in PD, dispatch, facilities. And of course, New Era and Frontier to come up with a solution, which I think is would be very effective. So I'll just turn it over to Brian to give you a recap on that.
Thank you, Aroche. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council.
Hi, Brian.
Hi. Okay, so as Aroche mentioned, we did have this meeting in Frontier and. New Era thought the best solution was to replace the copper-based PRIs, which are conducive to lightning with. Fiber-based SIP session initiation protocol. With those fiber lines, they would not be susceptible to lightning hits. They'd also have some other advantage such as. Better call quality and reliability. And also part of this plan would be to have an automatic failover redundancy where if one site went down, it would seamlessly switch over to the other site. Which is the the biggest part of this. And also included in this. Any equipment that was ever damaged internally, that is not part of. These two systems, but you know, further into the system would also be covered by a maintenance agreement with New Era. And they have a service level agreement. In place, so they they have an office in Cromwell with all the replacement equipment there, so it would be very quick turnaround time for any repairs. So New Era pricing is is under state contract. Frontier, they don't have a state contract for the SIP lines, so we're requesting a bid waiver for those. And we do have funding with the business continuity account to carry us through until July first, where then. Going forward, that would be included in the facility's operating budget.
Okay, thank you. Obviously, with what occurred, right, a few, what, weeks ago? Need to do something to ensure our communications are up, certainly for our public safety, number one, and the town as well, obviously, town hall, so. Okay, any questions for? Brian? I know we got briefed on what happened with the lightning strike and what a mess that made of our communication, so. This will hopefully alleviate that in the future. So with that, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve spending up to fifty thousand dollars with New Era Technology under state contract. OGS number P M two zero seven nine zero. And to approve a bid waiver for spending up to one hundred and five thousand dollars with Frontier Communications. For the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Will allow for implementation of redundant. S I P service and maintenance contract, since this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? Take a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Agenda item number seven is for the Timberland Golf Course, offer the course contract, which is concessions and. Food services. This contract, you recall, three years ago, we bid it out. You know, five different groups came in, looked at Timberland and just. The. Mr. Assani, who is the current incumbent, was the only one who put his name in there, right? Uh, Sal has worked with. Mr. Assani. And this contract here is to increase their current rent three percent a year for the next three years. And at the end of the three-year period, there's a town option. You want to extend it for two more years. Go with the three percent increase. Offline, I have consulted a couple of groups, other golf as well as restaurant groups. To see the price comparison and. We are in a good place compared to. Based on the location of the golf course and the seasonal nature of the business. I would advise it's a. A good good deal for the town.
Yeah.
So excellent. Contract is there for your review and Sal, do you have to? Would you like to add anything?
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I just want to say, working with Ramsey and. His staff, you know, has been a pleasure this year, so you know, he's dedicated to Timberland and he has a really, really nice following as well, so. Think a lot of patrons would be very happy to see him back.
He's got good food.
And the golf commission.
Yeah, and the golf.
And the golf commission, yes.
Yeah, good. That's good. All right, questions?
Just.
Yes.
Just want to mention that my family goes down there on Friday night. He has specials are unbelievable.
Yeah.
Lobster, prime rib, and the Italian dishes aren't too bad either. I would encourage the town to to frequent there, especially Friday nights. It really is. A good place to go and keeps all our dollars local.
You gotta get the swordfish.
Oh, swordfish sounds good, yeah. Check that out.
Obviously, I never met a meal I didn't like.
It's all good. Yeah, no, we always hear good things about it and have been there, obviously, to experience it ourselves, so it is good. Good food.
Broccoli, robin's sausage is good.
Yeah, so yeah, I guess it's. What's that? Yeah, that would that would have helped us voting. Yeah, where's the samples? We're kind of hungry. It's, you know, late in the evening here.
Alert.
Oh, well, too late now.
We'll see what we can do.
Yeah, next time, next time, yeah. Always next time. Yeah, okay, that's all right. Okay, yeah, no, that's good. So if there's no other questions or comments, we'll go ahead and have a motion. Take the motion.
Move to authorize town manager to enter into a contract with Mr. Assani for services. As the main food and beverage provider for Timberland Golf Course. For the period beginning January first, twenty twenty-four. Through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. With a town option to extend the contract for two more years.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Sal.
Thanks, Sal.
Agenda item number eight is the White Collar Union contract. Paula has been working on this contract. With the union representative and it has been. What shall I say? Taken longer than it should have, not because of Paula, obviously, lack of responsiveness. But I think we are at a good place and we're ready to sign the contract. It ran out June thirtieth, so it is for the next three years. And perhaps Paula can give us a couple of highlights.
That'd be good.
How about you, Paula?
Tired? Oh, come on. Not even eight o'clock yet, come on.
Should I have twelve hours today?
Oh, that's a long day.
Long day.
That is a very long day.
Yeah, as Aroche stated, this was a little bit more complicated than it had to be, but I will say it was not due to the. Union employees. They were fantastic. So once we all kind of decided to move forward, it was done in two meetings, so. It should have been done a long time ago, but unfortunately, sometimes it doesn't always go like that.
Yeah.
So you only see a few items. Most of this contract was really just language cleanup, house cleaning. Again, trying to stay consistent with all of the other contracts. I try to keep all the language the same, so just cleaning that up, cleaning up the vacation. It was a little messy, but we just took some stuff out and again, had it matching pretty much every other contract. And then for the wages, two point seven five for this current year, so that will retro back to July first. Once this gets signed, they'll get that. And then twenty twenty-four, three point two five, and then twenty twenty-five, three point two five as well. Again, just trying to stay consistent, you know, with all the last couple of contracts, we've done a little bit more. We've seen two and a quarter for the last like ten years for every contract, so with obviously inflation and everything else going on. Did a little bit more this round, so.
Okay, questions, folks?
Good.
Questions? We good? Okay. Okay, we appreciate all the hard work on this. I know it's never the most fun thing to do.
I love it.
Yeah, I bet you do. So but I, you know, needs to get done and it did, so that's great. Okay, we'll go ahead and take a motion on this. Um, yeah, Sandy? Sorry, sorry, yes.
That's okay. Thank you. Okay. Move to approve and authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with White Collar C A L U Local Two Union from July one, twenty twenty-three. Through June thirty, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. Second on that?
That's all right. He's got.
All right, thanks. Okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
And one abstention. Thank you, Charlie. All right, so so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Paula.
Again, now.
You could go relax. Relax now. We're still here, though, just so you know. We're still here, yeah, we're still. That's all. We get the big paychecks. That's what we get them for.
All right. Then item number nine is the resurfacing post-tension concrete basketball and tennis courts in Berlin High School. That needs to be done periodically. I'm gonna have the expert tell what he's gonna do with.
Yes, there's the expert. Here he is. Woody, how we doing? Good, how you doing?
Um, this is a project I inherited. It wasn't our project from the beginning, but when they renovated the high school. They changed over the asphalt, basketball courts and tennis courts to post tension concrete.
Okay, right.
Part of the post tension concrete is they need to be resurfaced and repainted every several years to extend the warranty.
Oh.
Next, at the end of next summer, we'll beginning of the eighth year. And if we're able to get them done next year, they will extend the warranty for another ten years, which will bring us to two thousand and thirty-four.
Okay.
And the warranty covers any cracking, peeling, bubbling, or if anything goes wrong with the surface, they will come back. If we resurface it a few years, you know, another seven to ten years after that, they will continue to keep the warranty going for as long as we. Deal with Classic Turf, who was the original manufacturer who installed it.
Nice business model, too.
Not bad. I asked what would happen if we went to another vendor. If, once we go to another vendor, it voids the warranty with Classic Turf.
Of course it does, yeah.
Over the eight years, I don't think we've received really any complaints with the playing surfaces.
Yeah.
We all know how highly used it is.
Still looks nice.
Yep.
I mean, yeah.
There are some areas that you'll start to see it fading, some areas that are starting to wear. It doesn't have the grip. The ball's not bouncing the way it used to. But all in all, it's in great shape.
Yeah.
I think I can answer any other question you got to throw at me.
And when do we start? So when do we replace this?
I believe they were installed in August of two thousand and seventeen.
Yeah, okay, yeah, sounds about right, yeah.
Yeah, they did the pre-stressed concrete, yeah.
Yep, exactly.
While we're on the subject. I I saw they laid a carpet down at the high school.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
Oh.
The football field.
Yeah, nice.
I'll pull up a picture. They took a droid picture of it today.
Yeah, let's see it while you're here.
So excited, he's showing it.
I am.
Really?
Like showing my kids.
Beautiful. It's beautiful.
Wow, that's great.
I wonder a lot of pressure to find it.
Yeah, pressure's on. Wow, that's great.
They're doing the Jeopardy movie.
We'll take that one. You're just passing along.
Well, do, oh, wow. That's, that's like a live pic, that was.
That's just today.
That was today, they, today they did it?
That's impressive. That looks nice. Good job. Really good job.
Inochoa Castle Booths and.
Wow, yeah, it looks nice.
H I Stone, everybody who was part of it did a fantastic job.
Long time coming.
I was concerned at the beginning because I didn't see the B in the middle of the field.
I love that.
But they added it, I guess.
And we, we decided to shrink the B, so the B now stays within the forty, uh, inside the fifty yard line, right center. Compared to when you look at Scalise, it kind of pours out a little bit. Um, the accent colors pop a little bit more than the other ones. It's my twins who teach me the accent colors.
What'd you say, Joe? Is it stitched?
Believe it or not, and what they don't see very frequently is it came from the company, so an AstroTurf sent that everything was already. Into it, so when they made the carpet, the numbers and the letters, and the numbers, the B, and everything was all in it. Which is uncommon, when we did Scalise, everything was glued, so they would go out there and they cut everything out, and each piece was glued, so it came right out of the manufacturer. Just the way it is, and they just rolled it up. Oh, really?
Who is that? Who would have done that?
That masked man from the south.
That would make sense. Well, thank you, uh.
Thank you, Jeff.
Corporation Council, we appreciate. We know we pay you for a reason, and that's, well, there's another reason. Are they? Yeah?
Yeah.
That's great, though.
But it looks great.
Yep.
Now, is it so clo- close to?
Close to finish, we have some, um, punchless items that need to be taken care of. We're hoping with any luck, the latest that it's going to open is November thirteenth.
No.
Hit a couple of setbacks here and there, um, but along the way, but everything else seems to go great.
Great, that's fine, long time coming.
Is it true that talking about Sage Field as a possible state for state playoff games?
Uh, soccer was looking into it, um, with, with us not having enough fields, with Percival Soccer being shut down, and Bascaglio being shut down. We would not have adequate fields for all the other groups, um, youth groups and high school groups to use, so probably not this year. Maybe possibly going out next year.
Thanks. Good job, boy.
Yeah, that's great. Excellent. Oh, so back to this, eh? Okay, yeah, no, that, that makes sense. We want to keep that looking good. They, that, that looked really nice when they redid it a few years ago, so we want to keep it looking good. The rest of the time is there, so if there's no other questions for. Mr. Woody, we go ahead and take, uh, a motion, two motions.
Move to approve non-budgeted appropriation of seventy-five thousand dollars from fiscal year. Twenty twenty four general fund, unassigned fund balance into recap tennis and basketball court. Pending Board of Finance approval.
Alright, second on that? Thank you, uh, there's no other comments or questions, we'll go ahead and, uh. Take a, uh, vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, so moved, second motion?
Move to waive the town's bidding procedures as this is the best interest of the town. And to approve the resurfacing of Berlin High School basketball and tennis courts for an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. With Classic Turf Company LLC pending approval of the fiscal year twenty four. Non-budgeted appropriation by the Board of Finance.
Second on that? Hey, any, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you very much. See, it was a pleasure working with you for the last couple of years.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Last couple of years.
Okay, yeah, went by, time goes by. Alright, the next two, uh, agenda items, uh, have to do with the application of a grant for the round two of the H V A C projects. Start at, uh, Griswold Elementary School and then talk about Hubbard, pretty much the same, but two agenda items. And, uh, Ashley, uh, has been working on this and, uh, I'll just turn it over to Ashley to, uh, give you an overview. What would you, Ashley?
Hi, everyone. Uh, thank you for your time. Uh, thank you for your time. The Department of Administrative Services opened up round two of the H V A C I A Q grant application in September. Parts of the application require the town council to, number one, authorize the superintendent or the board of ed to apply for the grant. Number two, to create a project building committee. And number three, to approve preparations and drawings for each project. The grant requires separate resolutions for each applications that we're submitting. We are planning to submit two identical resolutions. One for Griswold Elementary School and the other for Hubbard. Um, these are similar resolutions to what you passed in December of last year for round one funding. These items are really just one box and a series of boxes to get through this application, which is due on December thirty first. And the board of ed, um, really appreciates all the support we get from the town council as we seek alternative funding sources for these important projects.
Great. Thank you, yeah, that's be great if we can get some of this, right? But, uh, appreciate you guys working on this. So, uh, any questions?
Ashley, are you in any need of, uh, letters of support?
So, eventually, yes, we will need that from your office and from Jackson's office. Um, in the past, we did that after the application has been fully submitted, but I believe Julia will be reaching out to your offices. Um, in December, early January.
Okay, that's fine, whatever we can do to help. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Donna, that's great. Um, okay, uh, we'll go ahead and take, uh, we got, just got three motions on this.
Move that the town council. Authorize the Berlin Board of Education to apply to the State of Connecticut Commissioner of Administrative Services. To accept or reject a grant for H V A C I A Q grant at Mary E. Griswold School.
Okay, thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved, second.
Move that the Public Building Commission is hereby established as the Building Committee about the H V A C I A Q grant. At Mary E. Griswold School.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Number three.
Move that the town council authorize the presentation of schematic drawings and outline specifications. For the H V A C I A Q grant at Mary E. Griswold School.
Second.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Wait, thank you. Then item number eleven is the same, uh, it's a different application, but this is for Hubbard Elementary School. So, but we need it separately because there are separate applications, so. Sorry, Charlie.
Sorry, Charlie, sorry, Charlie.
Move that the town council authorize the Berlin Board of Education to apply for the State of Connecticut. Commissioner Administrative Services to accept or reject a grant for H V A C I A Q grant at. Richard D. Hubbard Elementary School.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Second.
Move that the Public Building Commission is hereby established as the Building Committee regarding the H V A C I A Q grant. At the Richard D. Hubbard Elementary School.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved, and number three.
Move that the town council authorize the preparation of schematic drawings and outlining specifications for the H V A C I A Q grant. At Richard D. Hubbard Elementary School.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved. Alright.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley. Let's hope the, uh, legislature is, uh, liking us. If we go forward.
Donna likes us.
Donna likes us, I know that.
Alright, um, moving along, agenda item number twelve, this is the appointment of members. The Plan and Conservation Development Implementation Committee. I think Jim and I talked about.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Implementation plan and we went back to all the boards and commissions and. Got all these names and Kate and Jim have been working to make sure the R's and the D's. Uh, uh, according to plan and it fits the, what we are supposed to do, so. Uh, I don't know, but, uh, you need any further information from Jim, otherwise, uh, you have the names and asking you to. Um, appoint these folks to the implementation committee, and since we spoke last, I mentioned this, the mayor, we had to. Um, not include anyone from the Board of Finance, the charter, who gets them from serving on any board or commission, so. They are not, yeah, but there are nine other boards and.
Okay. Alright, um. Any questions, folks? Yep, okay, we'll go and take a motion.
Move to appoint the following members to serve on the Plan of Conservation and Development Implementation Committee. Joan Veely, our Economic Development Commission. Ed Eggersernian, the Conservation Commission, Guy Hoffman, our Parks and Recreation Commission. Lucas Van Zant, our Water Control Commission, Bruce LaRoche. The Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission, Peter Niemann, the zoning board of appeals, Lenny Cobb, you. Historic District Commission, John Dyken, our town council, Sandra Coppola, our.
Our very own, how about that? Alright, so, uh, well, you're honest, you really can't second it, uh, Donna or Peter?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, yeah. Any other?
Make sure she does it.
Yeah, yeah, right, we want to make sure, yeah.
One second.
Um, just so you know.
Yes.
So, I didn't notice it until now.
Yes.
Um, Joan Veely is planning zoning. So, that's missing from the.
Oh, yeah, uh, oh. Yeah, right, what, yeah, that's right, we're having a planning and zoning, yeah, okay. So, so noted, so seconded and, uh. Alright, so, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved.
Great, thank you. The, the next few items, uh, Mr. Mahoney Show, um.
The Mahoney Show, okay.
Number thirteen has to do with the amendments to the Berlin Affordable Housing Plan. You recall that was done the year before, the, uh, Plan of Conservation and Development was completed and, uh. Be consistent, there are some changes that need to be made. Uh, was it Jim or Maureen, anyone who wants to give a brief overview on that?
Okay, I'll get started and then Maureen can, uh, chip in with anything I missed, but. As Arusha said, the, um, Affordable Housing Plan was adopted in May of twenty-two. And the Plan of Conservation and Development was just adopted this June. So we had anticipated, we wanted the plans to be in concert with one another. So we anticipated that and we wanted to update the Affordable Housing Plan once the, the P O C D was done and we. Tasked S F H I to help with that process. And, um, basically, first I want to start by giving you a little bit of a progress report on the affordable housing situation. And then talk about the changes to the Affordable Housing Plan that are recommended through the Planning and Zoning Commission. So. In twenty twenty-two, you know, one, one of the, one of the goals that we identify in the Affordable Housing Plan, then, you know, obviously we want to create a diverse. The first housing stock to serve all of the elements of our, our, our population, but. Uh, one of the goals we identify is trying to reach ten percent of our housing stock as classified as affordable. By the state definitions. And in, in twenty twenty-two, which is the most recent year that the state published statistics for. We were at, uh, eight point eight percent, so we were ninety-eight units short. Um, we had lost ground over the last few years, which was primarily, it was in. C H F A financed units and government assisted units. And those are two categories that really the town doesn't have any control over. We suspect that. In, in terms of certainly the C H F A units, that it probably had a lot to do with. With the pandemic and, and the short supply of housing and competition for, for housing, uh, that was available. But in, in other towns in the, in the area we checked, and everybody else had the same trend, so. It wasn't a unique situation to Berlin, but it is, it is something that did reduce our percentage. Another, another item that's coming into play in terms of meeting that ten percent goal is that. Uh, the ten percent goal is based on the most recent census. And in recently, the numbers for the housing count. For the twenty twenty census were published, and our housing count went up to eighty-five hundred and forty-seven units. From eighty-one hundred and forty units. So, the goal. That we're trying to achieve in terms of number of units, which is now eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty-five, moved up forty-four units. So, um, you know, we're moving, that, that is a, another challenge. So, another, uh, on the, so that's kind of the, the background. And in terms of actual housing development, affordable housing development and approvals and applications before planning and zoning. The, um, the significant progress is really dimming ridge that's being developed by Metro. It's eighty-eight units, all of them will count as affordable. And, um, that will get us, you know, significantly closer to the goal. Uh, we have, the units don't count in this system until you receive certificates of occupancy. And last month, um, uh, Metro received certificates of occupancy for the first two buildings of the project. And they expect to, uh, get all the C O's in the project by the end of the year or January. So we're really close to getting those eighty-eight units, which will bring us, put us again about fifty-four units short. Um, the good news is we've approved, you know, some significant projects, uh, we just need to see them developed. Uh, for example, four oh four Berlin Turnpike, uh, has a forty, you know, required affordable units. And depending on the financing, it could, could have a lot more affordable units for our count. Also, as we know, the Knights of Columbus project at fifty units was approved by planning and zoning, and there's. Smaller projects like three nineteen Main Street East Berlin, which is under construction, that will give us a few units. And there are, you know, there are other applications in the, in the pipeline now, so there's a lot of things, uh, uh, positive things happening. You know, we're confident that we're going to reach that goal of ten percent and. And, uh, also do other things to diversify our housing stock, but, uh, it's probably going to take us a little bit longer to get there. Now, in terms of the amendments to the Affordable Housing Plan to make it consistent with the P O, uh, P O C D. I think the major, I would just say, in the, in, in that whole, all the amendments are included in your package. And we're asking you to adopt the, the schedule of amendments as proposed. But primarily, the amendments really, most of the, in, in the original Affordable Housing Plan. It asks for, uh, evaluation of various, various alternatives, and then as part of completing the. Plan of Conservation and Development, F H I worked with the Plan, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission to actually do that evaluation. And now, you, we've come out with specific recommendations to address most of those areas. So, the language is, you know, it's, uh, just a shift in language to reflect, we're in a different place now. And, you know, moving forward to the next step, which would be, you know, creating the language and, and, um, and adopting. Changes to the zoning regulations as we have now, uh, developed them. So I think that's, that's the big picture, I don't know, Maureen, do you have anything else or? So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
I think you covered it quite thoroughly, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Any questions, folks? I know we've been talking about this for a long time, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, no further questions or comments, we'll go ahead and take a, uh, take a motion.
Move to amend the Town of Berlin Affordable Housing Plan for recommendations in the report by F H I Studio attached here and to. And to be attached to the minutes.
Second.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Wait, thank you. Item number fourteen is amendments to the contract of the F H I concerning amendments to the zoning ordinance. Jim, oh. Do you have this one too?
Okay, well, apropos to our last conversation, this is, you know, a request for. An amendment to, uh, F H I's contract for them to help us write the zoning amendments to. Implement those recommendations of the Affordable Housing Plan. And these, the funds for this will be taken for the plan, from the Plan of Development. Update account.
All right, thank you, Jim, any questions, Jim? Whole process here, so.
No, I can, I can just make a.
Yes.
From being on P O C D and.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
F H I, um, studio and, and Maureen. Francisco, who's been representing F H I Studio, um, as part of the P O C D project, has been great to work with.
Oh, good.
Makes wonderful recommendations, does research for us and everything, so I think they're, they've been a great company to work with.
Excellent. Good to hear. Appreciate that. All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to enter an amendment to the contract with F H I Studio in the amount of. Not to exceed eight thousand five hundred dollars. To be paid from the Plan Development. Update account and. Assist with preparation of zoning ordinance amendments recommended in the Town's Affordable Housing Plan. And Plan of Conservation and Development. Public to review and approval of Corporation Council.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
Thank you, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Right, thank you.
Thank you for all those, we appreciate all three items.
Agenda item number fifteen, I, I think you have heard about this Wigmont Road.
Yeah.
Multiple times.
Yes.
I think we're getting to the finish line in terms of actually. Beating the abandoned section of this road to the City of New Britain. Water Department. Again, Mr. Mahoney's been working on this one, there are maps included.
Yeah.
But, uh. Any, any finishing thoughts here before we deed it?
Uh, just that, again, we've talked about it before, it was referred to P and Z, they've given another favorable report. We're trying to, you know, properly deed the, um, the rights to. City of Britain, so they can agree to relocate our easement, so it would be able to connect. From Reservoir Road to, um, to, to, from Reservoir Road and, and Timberland. Back over to Ragged Mountain, uh, open space area.
Okay. Good. All right, any other questions? All right, we'll go ahead and take a motion, you got a long one there, Charlie. Keeping you busy.
To authorize the town manager to the.
Yeah, great.
The deed, the previously abandoned portion of Wigmont Road as described by map. Nineteen fifteen filed in the Town of Berlin Land Records and prepared by the Town of Berlin Engineering Department. That extends from the north end of Sanctuary Lane to. Ragged Mountain Preserve to the City of New Britain Water Department. And to reaffirm the previous approval. Relocate the public access and emergency and municipal vehicle access. In the manner depicted in the map titled relocation of easement for public access and emergency. Municipal vehicle access along former Wigmont Road. Dated two thousand and twenty-three, scale one inch equals three hundred. Prepared by New England Geo System, subject to review and approval of Corporation Council.
Take a second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Right, thank you. Agenda item number sixteen, uh, these two grants, uh, the Steel Boulevard. Grant and the Community Challenge Grant. One for five hundred thousand, another one, the million five sixty, this is asking the council to, uh, appropriate it. For the project that's outlined. Anything to add, Jim?
No, no, reappropriate and refer it to Board of, Board of Finance.
Yes.
Yeah, that's great. Good. Excellent, all right, so we have, yeah, we know about this, we've heard about this, it's great, we got the, the funding.
Is the park design been finalized?
I think.
No.
Working on a park, right?
Right, yeah.
Theater and all that, yeah, it's in the works.
Yeah. We have a design, but we're, you know, we'll, we'll, you know, fine tune it and develop the bid specifications. So we'll keep you updated as we go along, I think we, I think the design, we already went through an eight twenty-four and approved it, uh, but. You know, we will keep you up to date on the details, but again. It's going to have to be coordinated also with the timing of the, um. Fifty-five Steel Boulevard project, which we'll be talking about shortly, so. Uh, that's a little delayed, so the park will have to wait. Uh, because we would, we'll have to, we, the, there's going to be a, a subsurface drainage system for the. That it relates to fifty-five steel and also to the boulevard, that's going to be beneath the park. So they got to get that done before we can build a park on top of it.
Sense. Okay, any other questions? If not, we'll take a couple motions, Charlie.
Move to appropriate five hundred thousand dollars Small Town Economic Assistance Grant. Steep for the Steel Boulevard Park Project.
Take a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, so moved. And number two.
Move to appropriate a. Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant of one million five hundred sixty thousand nine hundred and forty-seven. Dollars for the Kensington Village Core. P O D Improvement Project Subject to Newport Realty. Eight forty-eight Farmington Avenue LLC. Securing project financing and approvals and to refer this matter to the Board of Finance.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Sandy. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Right, thank you. Item number seventeen is the license agreement we have with Newport Realty, it's, uh. Runs out. Terminated December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. For various reasons that Jim will explain, we need more time and this is to amend that agreement to by one more year. December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Right.
Jim?
So, yeah, the reason we need the extension is, uh, you remember, we entered into a contract to. Start the, um, engineer control project on fifty-five Steel Boulevard, which would be the environmental remediation. Which we were doing in cancer with Newport. Installing the foundation and, uh, and the utilities connections into the site. So the first step was to remove the foundations. Foundations were removed and crushed. And when we did that, we found out that some of the subsurface materials were not suitable for the. Foundations that were designed originally by, um, by Newport. So have to redesign the foundations, uh, we also are lifting the building by eight inches in order to maintain, keep all the materials on the site. Because we don't, uh, can, we, we don't want to have to export any contaminated material offsite, we want to keep it under the. Liner geomembrane on the site. So that delayed us and, um, so for the license agreement. We will, uh, need an extension of a year. And we'll probably be making some other changes to that project, uh, because we're having discussions with our. Our low bid contractor, um, that is under contract, uh, for the project B and W paving. And once we conclude those, we'll give you a further update, but right now. We're just asking for the extension of the license agreement.
Okay. The, uh. Project that never ends with the pollution there, that's.
One, one observation, you know, I think we have good partners here.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Port and Jim and B and W and Jeff has been very, you know, creative in terms of trying to, you know, navigate these challenges. But one good thing is all of us just want this project done, so everybody's on the same page in terms of finding solutions and moving forward, so. But like you said, every time you dig a hole, you find.
Something wrong, yeah, something else is there wrong, yeah, I know, yeah, it's just.
I would also say the state, you know, we, we, uh, Department of Economic Community Development, as we've faced the challenges, they've tried to help us. Uh, navigate through them too, so we thank their patience as well.
Yeah, no, I'm, everybody's working together, that's, that's a plus right there. Okay, all right, so if there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and take a motion, Charlie.
Move to authorize the town manager to enter into amendment to the license agreement between the town of. When the town and Newport Realty Group LLC. To extend the license to a new termination date of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Subject to review and approval of Corporation Council.
Second? You, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Agenda item number eighteen, uh, we talked about this last time, again, as part of the Community Challenge Grant, doing some. Trails and we need some easements, um, and this is to get those easements from these different groups. That we can actually go and do the trail.
Yeah, should be nice.
Anything to add, Jim, are you good?
No, I'm good.
Yeah, no, we've heard about this before, so that's good, great. Okay, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to enter into easements with Newport Realty Group. The Kensington Fire Department and the Berlin Land Trust to allow trail improvements to be. Instructed and to provide public access to trails. At rear of eight forty-eight Farmington Avenue as shown in the map titled. Concept walking footpath system. For the Berlin Town Center. Concept layout. Subject to review and approval of set easements by Corporation Council.
Take a second?
Second.
Uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
Right, thank you. Then item number nineteen is the, uh, request authorization for the subordination of the Town's facade program. Mortgage with respect to the forty-eight Farmington Avenue. Uh, we have done these things before, um, since Newport has to get a loan to get these things done. Subordinating, uh, to the Thomas and Savings Bank. It is their bank.
Got it.
Yeah, actually, in this case, we're subordinating to the state because they're giving us that grant. And we've already subordinated to Thomas and Savings Bank, but, uh, yeah, so the state. Yeah, state has given us for this part of the project, you know, a million one or. And, um, so we would be subordinating the grant, or the facade grant, which was funded by the state to the new grant that's funded by the state. But. Again. This will make it all work, but as Jeff, Jeff and I have been working on, uh, this, uh, closing for this community challenge grant, which has. Probably about. Eighteen to twenty, uh, a, a part agreements that are part of the grant. And, um, the, the support, the, this, this, this mortgage that Newport needs to grant to the state is just one of those, so. Uh, but we're almost there at the closing, we're going to close, uh, this week or beginning of next week.
Great. Appreciate that. Any other questions, or Jim? All right, we'll take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to execute subordination agreements. To the State of Connecticut and related additional financing from. Thomas and Savings Bank with respect to the town's mortgage from Newport. Eight forty-eight Farmington Avenue LLC. Related to the facade, facade program. Grant debt, a re. That is recorded on volume seven. Seventy-three, page two twenty-six of the Berlin Land Records. Subject to the review and approval of Corporation Council.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
Right, thank you, thank you very much, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you all, especially to Charlie for reading all those motions, thanks, Charlie.
All right, agenda item number twenty, uh, this is to, uh, put in writing the current practice that we have. At the, uh, Revenue Collector's Office. You recall, there was a gentleman who showed up with cash and. A lot of old notes in there that the machine didn't accept and, uh. They came to the bank and get new notes and come back. So, uh, we did some homework, looked at what other departments do, uh, other towns. I also called, uh, about three banks to sort of get an understanding of how, uh, what could happen in case. We, uh, accept cash without running it through the machine, or if you run it through the machine, if it rejects and you use the pen. If it still passes, but it. fails the counterfeit test. So banks, simply all of them say if you, if you do that. You admit it, could deposit up ten grand and two is bad, you get credit by eight, that's it.
What is it again, what do the banks say?
Banks say if it's counterfeit, if it's bad money, the, it's, we have to eat it, the town, oh, banks not to make you whole.
Gotcha.
So, uh, what, what this is doing is, uh. We, on the next page, I, we have a policy that is the current practice, but we have put it in a format. And they're pretty much saying if you come with cash, we're going to run it through the machine. And, you know, this is to safeguard the town's assets and the taxpayers. Make sure it's, you know, uh, secure and it's valid legal currency. And just in case if it rejects. We're asking you to write a check. Or get notes that could be authenticated by this machine, the machine is brand new, it's one that a lot of the towns are using and.
Okay.
Towns can't even get access to this.
Yeah.
In addition to that, uh, we are also, um, limiting coins, uh, coins of. More than five dollars, they have to be enrolled so that somebody won't come and give you a hundred million coins to pay taxes.
Bag of pennies?
Bag of pennies, right? Um, what I, uh, will do, we missed this year, but next year with the tax bill. Will send this policy as a note, but I know right now after this, we'll post it. Um, we'll put it on the website, we'll get it on social media. And, uh, I will personally call the gentleman and I'll send him a letter saying this is our policy, so please, if you have all notes, go to the bank, make sure you get the new ones. Um, because. The, the revenue collector is not in a position to, you know, hold line, uh, notes to the light or the.
I mean, we have the machine, that will, obviously, I would think in most cases would work, yeah, yeah.
So, uh, I just want you to know, um, that we're doing this, I'm not asking for approval, because this is our current practice, but, you know, to put it in writing. Communicate it so that everybody knows, uh, what the policy is and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, no, I mean, uh, that's good, you know, we have a.
You said it was going to be posted in the office, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ex-office.
Perfect.
And next year, when we send the bills out, we'll actually send it to the tax bill itself, so there's no confusion.
Did this mollify or satisfy that customer that day? That came in and.
No.
Recipitated all that?
No.
The, the, this policy.
We're not going to do anything else, right, this is it, okay.
And I'm going to personally call him and tell him.
Yeah.
Don't try to make a statement here. I mean. I mean, bills that are fifty hundred years old and they don't have the counterfeit measures that are in new bills.
Right.
Is a way to protect the town, the other one is, we don't want to be in a situation to take. Any money that won't read, uh, the machine checks, yeah. We'll get it out very soon, that, you know, the town of Berlin will take anything in.
Well, yeah, I mean, we have to rely upon that technology and if it's not working, then. Shouldn't be on us, but I, I, I mean, at least now for the gentleman that. Came in, at least there's a, you know, we, I guess we didn't have a policy, right, we didn't, I mean, we did, but we didn't have a formal policy, at least now we have something to.
Now, but.
Advise.
To find out, there were some towns that did take cash.
That didn't?
And then like North Haven takes during tax season up to a thousand.
In cash, in cash, that's it, they won't take more than.
Kind of limit cash.
They limit it, yeah, okay.
So, because there's risk associated with.
Yeah.
Cash and if the money's not good.
Well, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't want to go that far.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm not suggesting, but I'm saying this is, what we are doing is not extreme.
Yeah, no, 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 right, no, it doesn't appear to be.
Yeah, the business would do.
Yeah.
Taking cash, make sure that is a.
Sure.
Good bill.
And, you know, again, at least now we have a written policy to advise folks that come in and. Don't make it up, you know, as we go, not that we did, but, you know.
Especially if it's the last thing, I mean, the office is busy enough.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, I think it seems fair and again, we got to verify any business would and, uh. Uh, yeah, I mean, I think it's certainly. Correct to take cash myself, I mean, it's still legal tender in the U.S. wherever we go, so, uh, yeah, if they want to pay cash, that's fine, as long as it. Passes the machine and if it doesn't, yeah, they'll have to just go exchange it. Welcome to come back with it, yeah, whatever, whatever doesn't work and or write a check, so.
I think it would also help personnel there to be able to refer to the policy.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Have that issue that we had.
Right, right. There's a policy and you know, we could explain it to the to the taxpayer and you know.
It has happened a couple of times.
Yeah.
Through a couple of the bills.
Yeah, sure.
Who and the person paying said, oh, no problem. I'll write you a check.
Yeah.
Fifty dollars a hundred back.
Yeah.
But in another stack of money, that's not gonna.
I'm sure. I mean, listen, it's gonna happen. There's counterfeit bills out there. So no matter who's paying or what you're paying with. So yeah, that makes sense, I think.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Agenda number twenty one is my favorite.
Just my lucky night.
Mr. Capola to do another service for us. So uh, we just uh um approved and actually it's actually active, the Berlin Police Pension.
Yes. Oh, it's active now. That's great. Yeah, right.
So we have a statement of investment policy. And we want to have a small investment committee in place to make sure that uh, that we meet the investment objectives and we will be um working with our consultant who gives us advice. Periodically, maybe three to four times a year we meet and look at how the managers are doing. They'll do all the homework.
Good.
And also make sure that if there are any managers or that need to be on a watch list or remove them or add new ones. Um, there's an investment policy that says, you know, what your stocks and uh market securities and all range that needs to be. So right now, there's uh the Finance Director, myself and um the Police Union nominated Lieutenant Sean Solak be their rep. And we had talked about having a representative from the council and the Board of Finance. Again, you can't have someone from the Finance because they can't sit on the committee. So
Okay.
We are asking you to uh for Mr. Capola and our total level keep it um, your minimum in terms of you just have to show up and give your input and it might be even a Zoom meeting. So we'll work around your schedule and see how um, I would appreciate it if you go on it.
No problem.
Okay. You got no choice, Sandy. Once you make the motion, that's it and approve it. You're honored. No choice. All right, yeah, that that sounds good. Um, Sandy, you're okay? Is that right?
Okay with that.
All right. Okay, then.
I move to appoint Counselor Sandra Capola to the Pension Committee of the Town of Berlin Police Pension Plan.
Second, there.
All right. Second, uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? And uh, one abstention? Unless you wanna vote for yourself, I don't know. You could just abstain. I think you can abstain. That's a good, that's probably a good idea. Unless you wanna vote? No, no. Okay, we're good. Well, congratulations.
Yeah.
Yeah. We think. Okay, that'll be our, that'll be good. Um. Okay. Hey, so I just have a question, Kate. So I know we're on to the town manager report, but so one of our boards and commissions, right? We're down on so what is that gonna be okay for uh?
Yes.
The upcoming meeting?
Yes.
Okay. We don't need to worry.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, speaking code, that's very good.
Huh?
Good, very good.
Okay, just wanna check. We're good. Okay. I'd take it next time we can.
Yeah, the application to fill that spot didn't come in until Monday.
Yeah, okay, got it.
And we had a previous application who, when he found out that he would have to be would have to go off of all the other committees.
Oh, yes.
Not wanna do that.
Okay, I think I did hear that. Yes, okay, got it. All right, so.
Again?
Yes, you you're on.
All right, so we have some good news to share with you. Drum roll, please.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so remember um, I mentioned last time?
It's been a lot of good news tonight, actually.
But continue the good news.
Good, well, that's a good thing.
The um people have these excuses they make about elections, you know, nobody told us, we didn't know there was an election.
Yes, we've heard that many times.
We talked about reaching out to every every
Right, you said that, yeah.
Voter.
Yeah.
A card that will tell them, is an election is where you have to write. So what first want to get it done outside, but eight year volunteer the staff and I have the samples.
Oh.
That will be
Sent out.
Yesterday.
Oh, very nice. That's good.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I didn't mean.
I guess.
Oh, wow.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh. So what do we, what do you think, Jeff?
Love it.
It's a date and time. That's it.
Yeah. Well, that's that's actually, yeah.
Yeah.
Now.
Exactly what I had.
Thanks for your blessing. Um. Uh, that that's yeah, legal and blessing. Yeah. But um, that's great. Well, yeah, I know, no, I know people don't, you know, and and it's, you know, sad. They don't they forget or they don't pay attention. So this would be helpful to.
So thank you, Kate, you and your.
Yeah, Kate, thank you for the uh.
Put everything together.
Very nice. So we may have some other stuff for you to do then, since you did this, there's.
Might have uh.
That's why you never step up, Kate. You know what happens. No, just kidding. That's great. Thank you for doing it.
So what what do we normally get for the mayor election? Uh, twenty, thirty percent?
I apologize. I need to check, but it's usually probably about thirty five.
We're gonna get probably seventy, eighty percent people showing up.
Let's hope.
We're just getting orders this year.
For what? Seventy or eighty percent showing up?
But you got the card now.
I I I'm guessing that's not gonna happen anyway.
It'd be interesting to see.
What do what do we usually get?
I think it's about thirty five.
Thirty five or forty, right? Something like that.
Depends upon.
On average, e- even even on the presidential election year?
Presidential.
That's much higher, right?
Oh, yeah.
Low. Forty percent, right? Yeah.
So for presidential, we'll be in the high eighties.
High eighties.
And then for the gubernatorial, it's usually in the seventies, I think.
Seventies, okay, okay. Yeah, it'd be nice. Fifty would be nice. Yeah.
May.
Maybe.
May.
Maybe with this, no.
I I can remember a long time ago.
When eighteen hundreds, Peter? Just kidding, just kidding, no.
Come in my horse and buggy.
Yeah.
We got sixty percent.
At the local?
Yes.
Really, huh? That's pretty high.
In the height of the powers wars and.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, cuz there was all kinda
Yeah.
Stuff happening, but.
So it's possible.
Yeah.
He was running. That's why you're saying.
Yeah, that's right. That's why it was so high.
How the, how are they gonna get these?
It's mailed, posted.
Oh, good.
Labelled.
It went out yesterday.
Went out yesterday, so.
Oh, it did?
Yeah, if you all don't get anything at home.
I didn't see it. I didn't see it, yeah.
But it's still not gone.
No.
It went out yesterday.
Yeah, I know. I'm just kidding.
Office. So by next week, you should have it. And
Good. No, that's great.
Then uh, what we wanna do is for the other disappointment was how many people didn't show up to vote for the budget referendum.
Oh, that was a, that's, that's
As well.
Five hundred people showed up, I think.
Because
Yeah, that's really low.
So we we have this brilliant idea that you're gonna like.
Yeah.
On that, are we ascending?
A Paul Revere ride through town?
We're gonna put the pie chart on it.
Oh, the pie chart, yes.
Do you think?
Yes, we like, I like the pie chart.
Oh, Jeff.
Jeff's not liking the pie chart.
No pie.
All right, no pie charts. I kinda figured that would flow. Yeah.
It's a fact sheet. It's the budget.
Well, we're gonna do that from now on.
We can talk about it.
Yeah.
No, we can't. No, we can't.
Things I thought was nice that we, I I'm sorry.
No, sorry, go ahead, Kate.
Um, the registrar is brought off, brought up. And I can, I'll talk to Jeff about it, of course. But um, is maybe for the referendum, we can have that um fan code put on it so that people don't know where they go to vote. It will have
Oh, yeah. Oh.
No, all right.
Oh, that'd be good, too.
So as we're walking through it and doing everything, we'll make it better and we'll of course talk to Jeff about it. But it's things like that that we like to do. And it helped kinda, so this went to families. So you're not gonna get individual ones. We polled anyone that we could. The biggest thing we found in Berlin, um, which I understand is one member of the family lives in Kensington and at the same address, the other one lives in Berlin. So.
Really, huh?
Same person.
Same person.
However, they registered. The registers can't change it. So we only sent like, of course, one label, but it took a little bit. And I think that's where we're gonna save money because if we had sent it out to somebody, they would have just sent them all out. And this way we could see where, you know. So.
You don't need you and your spouse to get one. It's by household.
By household.
I mean, I.
Yeah, we need one to stick on the refrigerator.
Yeah, so we can remember.
So there would be two labels created, one for, you know, one maybe Sandy had registered under Kensington and Chris had registered under Berlin. That created two same address, created two labels. So that's where we pulled a lot of the labels. Of course, you can send them out.
So I wanna push you a little bit on this one. Don't call it the pie chart. What we asking? We are asking people to come and vote for a budget and we are saying it's a hundred million dollar budget. Here's how we're gonna spend.
Which is?
All right. It it needs to be something useful, right? We asking you to come in? Yeah, okay.
Like a pie chart? Okay.
But other explanatory text, I mean, that's very clear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Date, time, place.
Sorry, now I can't do it.
Date, time, place. Once the referendum is pending, the only thing that taxpayer money can be spent on is date, time, place of the referendum and explanatory text.
Explanatory.
Explanatory text cannot be used to influence which way a voter votes. I don't think a pie chart does that.
Yeah.
I think if it's in the explanatory text, it's fine. I just don't think you can stick it on a notice of date, time, place.
So what Jeff is saying that.
If you wanna enclose the expla- if you wanna send people the explanatory text and say you can combine the two if the explanatory text is nice and short.
Yeah, I mean, on one side, you you put that when you vote. On the other side, you put.
That's fine.
Okay. All you're saying is X percent of your budget goes for public work.
That'll work.
Education, public.
Call that explanatory. We'll just put explanatory text.
Public information.
Make sure I'm not doing something.
I don't.
All right, that's good.
All right, but right this way.
Yeah, that's great. Now, I mean, uh, everybody always says they don't know when Election Day is.
Okay, thanks to you and your team for saving us.
Yeah.
By doing that.
Yeah, you save money, too. Bonus for Kate today?
Yeah, let's.
This year.
Just like calling.
Huh?
Give the same bonus like you.
Oh, we're gonna get the bonus like we got?
I have jo- I have a job.
That's a big, big bonus.
Spend a million and a half for that logo, that artwork. You didn't spend a million and a half for that artwork like the state with the new logo?
Let me tell you, I have creative staff members.
That's great. Save money. Excellent.
We forgot to get Jeff's approval.
We got it right here. Look at that. We got it right here, huh? Oh, there we go. That's it. That's it.
That long conversation we had about a whole bunch of stuff.
All right, a couple of other items. Uh, good news, we just bought concrete for the wash bay.
Oh, yes, the wash bay.
Finally, it's happening. I am not sure whether we will have it already for this season, but it that's the intent. So the salary will be going up soon and
Nice.
But it's happening.
Yeah.
So it'll be good. Um, hopefully it's a mild winter, too.
Let's hope.
Um. The uh Connecticut Economic Development Association, uh, they gave a uh award to Mr. Crusage. He's a Member of the Year Award for his outstanding service to not only to Berlin, but to the profession and also for helping his peers and colleagues in the state of Connecticut. Uh, the mayor and I been uh were there for the event.
We were there. It was great.
Recognized and I think that's pretty cool that someone in Berlin and they all had a lot of good things to say about him. They must have mentioned the word energy twelve times at least in his the presenter's remarks, so.
So we we should get get him at the next council meeting.
Yeah, I and I yes, I have one here and I apologize for not being there this evening um in person. But I do have one, so if we can get that on the agenda for um
Next time.
The next time, that would be great.
He should bring his, you know, what we can sort of give it. Yeah, we should recognize him.
I'm looking on something for the citizen, too.
Oh, good. Okay, good.
Okay, good. Good, fantastic.
All right, and then um all of you have, the library is doing a strategic plan, right?
Yeah.
Uh, you have this online as well as the paper. The the bottom line is without going into too much detail.
Yeah.
This is uh him and her staff are working with the Library Consortium to develop plans for each of the libraries. To reach out to our community and ask, what is it that you want from the library? How do you use it? Uh, are there things that you like? Are there things that you want from the library that we don't have? To survey the community because they're here at the end of the day to serve the community, right? And the libraries are evolving in terms of what kind of services they provide. So um, I I think it's it's a great way to sort of uh find something that's unique to Berlin. And uh, because it's not really just books anymore. There are a lot of other things happening in libraries and we can find ways to help the community. Uh, this is the way to do it. So if you can, um, it's online, but you also have this. Fill it out, won't take like five minutes. Uh, drop it off, me, Kate, the library, anyone else.
With the Dubai? Um, soon?
Thirty.
Of, yeah, of of this month?
Yep.
October? Lot of homework for the thirtieth. I don't know.
We can, we can do it.
No, we get it.
Um, couple of other items I wanna share with you, uh, some events. You probably saw the Scarecrow Event.
Yes.
That's taking place. I mean, you'll come down the town hall. Uh, there's voting that's taking place at the, they can drop your ballots in the library town hall community center and we now get uh get certificate to a local business of their choice. Um, there's a second, the trunk or treat event that it used to take place as Sage. It's gonna be
What are they doing?
On October twenty eighth, six to seven here in the community center.
Oh.
Like fourteen cars with their trunks and the candies.
Oh.
And people will park right across.
Oh.
Walk.[1637.51]
Okay, six to seven in the evening.
Yes.
And on on Saturday, this Saturday.
And the the same Saturday, this is something news. It's called the pumpkin pellusa for the pantry. So you probably know there's a financial advisor group called Trivant. They are.
Oh, yeah.
Through the CBS there.
Yes.
So they reached out to social services and they said, you know, how can we help the community in this holiday season? And so they're sponsoring this creative event. It's to collect, people coming in, you know, to collect food donations for the pantry.
Oh, okay.
Then they'll have, you know, things like face painting, kids craft, ice cream truck, you know, photos, pumpkin, take a, go home.
And when is that? When is that?
That's on, on Saturday the twenty eighth from ten to twelve.
Okay, ten to twelve.
Trunk or treat is in the evening from six to seven.
And then.
Then.
We have another one, right?
The businesses have.
Businesses eleven to two on Saturday.
Right.
The to walking up, but that works well. They could walk up and they could go up to that other event.
Yeah.
Because it's eleven to two, I think, is the trick or treating on on Farmingdale.
Want to put on a costume, just councilmen boots, that's fine too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's good. Oh, wow. So busy day.
Busy weekend and just one final thing I want, you have this with you. So this is a, this is actually pretty cool. This is America, the two hundred and fifty years of celebration.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's a couple of years from now, but the governor formed this commission. And it's, this is a way for local towns and communities to come up with ways they want to celebrate this special occasion.
Wow.
So they've asked us to put a committee together uh, that could have, you know, community leaders, business leaders, you know.
Right.
Economic development, libraries, you know, town clerks, you know, so all these different groups, but in the me, first they've asked for a liaison that the state can communicate with. I spoke with three people who are working with me, Chris Ed and Kim from the library.
Oh.
And then also community services.
Oh, good.
Oh, Kim would volunteer, raised her hand to be the liaison. So it it's a little bit later, but and then the whole thing was put together, you know, in the July for twenty twenty six. No, no, no.
Oh, Sandy, Sandy, Sandy's the liaison. We make it, we make it motion?
So ct250.org, go on the website. They have all these things about the themes, the mission, the resources.
Two hundred and fifty years. Well, under Roman Empire, it lasted a couple thousand.
I'm sorry?
Well, what did the Roman Empire last? Two thousand?
Yeah, this is two hundred and fifty.
So well, and we made two fifty? Well, we didn't make it yet. We didn't make it yet. Ten percent.
Now, if you, if you, if you go on the website, there's a video where the governor is signing.
Yeah.
The this commission and putting it in place. And there's a very famous town clerk of the state of Connecticut.
Really?
Next to the governor.
Oh, who would that be?
So I don't know.
Somebody that does artwork with their staff?
Yeah, right, right with the governor.
Right with the governor too. Maybe you could do some artwork for the gov.
So I mean, I don't know, us got invited, but you know. Yeah, that's, that's very cool.
Good.
If you get a chance, look at it.
Yeah.
That's it. Ct250.org.
Okay, yeah, I can, I still was reading that.
We'll keep you informed. I think it 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 will bring the community together to come up with teams that are unique to Berlin and how can we still celebrate as a country, but also celebrate what's unique in Berlin. I think.
That it?
That's it.
We're gonna add one more thing, right? The ballot box.
Yes, the ballot box.
Yes. What do we think about the ballot box, Ms. Kate? So what are we thinking?
Oh, we we thought a lot.
Yeah, I bet you have, yes.
So the ballot box, where it's located, as you know, the cameras on it to get the license plate of any car that pulls up to it or even in.
Right.
Goes around.
Yeah.
Um, we have been in touch with facilities and with IT. And it will be something that we can do. It won't be done for the municipal election. What will be done is that we're going to put the camera by the ballot box on the island. Okay, behind the ballot box.
So you can see the person.
So that you can actually see the person.
Yeah.
Putting the ballot into the box. What it entails, it's it's just kind of corny and everything is that they're not going to dig up the driveway or anything like that.
Wireless?
It's going, no, there will be a wire.
Okay.
And I'm not an electrician, so I don't know how this all happened.
Could do wireless probably in a day for this election.
Well, we have looked at everything that we possibly could do.
Okay.
And you know what is coming up here.
Okay, so what would, so.
So it will be done and it is, and the biggest thing right now is that we're behind, we can't get all the parts.
Yeah, that is a problem.
It's a four to six week out.
Yeah.
Parts. And that's the biggest thing. If we were just gonna, if we had everything available, it might go a little bit quicker.
Right.
But as I mentioned, facilities has been involved, IT, the whole bit. And any other place we wanted to put the camera, it wouldn't have actually got the person's face.
Right.
And the re, at one point, we thought we could put it on the pole that is on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
But the reflection of the car window, we tested all this out. If it, you won't see the face. So if you pull up to the ballot box and you go to put a ballot in there, depending upon how the light is shining, you can't see into the car. So that's why we want to put it above the ballot box per se, but you also have to protect that camera from vandalism. So there's a couple of things that are being worked out. Um, and that's where we will go. Now, with that said.
So for this election.
No, so for what we're doing.
What do we do for this? What do we do?
Is we have issued a hundred and ninety six absentee ballots.
Okay.
One hundred and ninety six. Nothing like we did for presidential.
Oh, yeah. Because what'd you have for that? You had a lot.
Okay, we have gotten back so far seventy five.
Okay.
Now, they come back in multiple ways. Come back when somebody votes in person in my office. Or they drop them off, or they come through the mail. Or they're dropped off in the ballot box. So now what we're doing is when my staff takes ballots out of the ballot box, I review them. So like this morning, there was four ballots in the ballot box. They were from two couples. Could obviously tell the address was the same, the last name was the same, along those lines. When I looked at it yesterday, kind of a similar thing. We're not getting a lot in the ballot box, but here's a review.
What do you usually get for municipal elections, like two years ago?
Your actual numbers on that, but it's always been low for president, for absentees and everything.
Yeah, maybe. I don't know. I'm trying to think last time there was.
Yeah. So we mail out a lot.
Double that? Maybe double that last time?
I would have to, I don't want to guess until I I look it up.
I think four or five hundred last time.
I don't think it was happening.
No.
Not for mayor, not for remissible.
I don't know. There was.
I would be very surprised at that.
Large numbers.
Maybe you're right. I don't know.
Because of COVID.
And well, and that could be too.
People, the.
That could be too.
People are dropping out stuff and that.
But I would rather give you the figures that we have.
Yeah, yeah. That's so far. Right, they.
Yeah, but we got two more weeks to go.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, and our biggest push.
When do they start coming in? When when was it?
Our biggest push, when we mail out the 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 ballot is with the permanent absentee balloting. So we have eighty six people who are on our permanent absentee balloting. And those are people who have, it's a a program set up that I I really do endorse this. That they have to complete an application. They have to get a doctor's note. We put them on the permanent list. And then, of course, we check to make sure that they're still alive and everything and they haven't moved out of town. And then they're automatically sent a ballot. But a lot of those people don't vote every election. So a lot of that one, out of that one ninety six that have been issued so far, I anticipate that there'll be some that will not come back. And it's simply because whoever got a permanent absentee ballot did not want to vote in this election. Yes.
So the camera is recorded, not not live?
Yes.
That's not.
It's live too.
Well, I don't know what you.
Nobody monitors it.
Right. It's nobody, it's not monitored.
So that's not very helpful at all, right?
Okay.
Because how do you know? So when you, when are they gonna, do they review it every hour, every day? I mean, like, you're gonna have a car drive by and you won't.
But if I haven't issue with the ballot.
The ballots.
Been in.
Right.
Okay, we got the four in today.
Okay.
They were definitely by spouses.
Yeah, okay. I mean, you could tell.
All right.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want me to then spend twenty four hours trying to figure out when they dropped them off, when it's.
No.
The spouse.
No.
All right.
Not if you could.
It would be if there was something that happened that looked like all of a sudden, you know, there was ten that came in from page ridge or something that I'm like, well, why do we get so many? And even then, I'm not too sure what I can actually do. But we can look at the tape. We can go back on the tape for that. But then that would have to, this is all very, very, and I don't, I don't really, I'm not really comfortable talking about all this at this, but you have to. I I can't make a determination that an absentee ballot is not viable. And it would have to be something similar to what happened in Bridgeport where they caught it on tape.
Well, that's what we're talking about and we can't catch it on tape. Because we can't see a face. We can see a car, maybe if the license plate is even visible. Well, if somebody is smart enough to not put the license plate on and drive through, we have nothing. That's what I mean. It's not very secure. We just saw it in Bridgeport. Lady walked over full camp, you know, dumped whatever she dumped.
Multiple times.
Yeah.
On camera, somebody spotted it.
Yeah.
And it's also, unfortunately, there's been um, and and I can't speak from experience. I can only speak from what I've heard.
Sure.
Is that that is a very high absentee ballot city and also.
Amongst other things it is, yeah.
And also, it's really their primary that normally determines their election. Right, so I don't know the ins and outs. Nobody does. It's in court.
Right.
Um, until everything is presented and they come up with some things and that takes care of that. But if there's no way to guarantee that I did not put Roche's absentee ballot in the ballot box when there's one ballot from Roche.
Yeah.
You're just using as an example.
Yes, I'm only using that.
Two other different people.
No, but I mean, there, you have to, I could also, at the same point, I want to spend money, I can go to the post office and put ten ballots in, absentee ballots in the post office. And that's never been monitored.
Right. Lot of holes in the system, but.
There's a lot of ability for people who honestly want to vote, to vote.
Yeah.
And that is what it's supposed to be, especially where we do an absentee application. And on the application, they attest there, because we are still right now, you have to have a reason for a ballot. An absentee ballot.
Yeah.
Okay, so they have to say that they have a reason why they want the ballot. Now, in twenty twenty four, there will be a question on the presidential ballot about opening up absentees, anyone. And then what in Connecticut, we, if that passes, there may be where there's no excuse absentee.
Different, yeah.
Then I think we are in a better place because by then we have the camera, we have other things that are going on. They have early voting. We'll see how that goes. Things are being encouraged to see where we can go with all this.
So do we know how long they keep the footage for on the camera?
Thirty days.
Thirty?
Yeah, it's Kate goes and gets the stuff every day. So.
Yeah.
Like Nick, if she sees.
Something wrong.
Stuff that and, you know, you also know who took the absentee ballot, the applications, right? So, you know, if there are things that are, she can, she'll know immediately there's something not right and we can probably track it down, the license plate.
I mean, at least the license plate is a start. There, you know, and when you think about it, there's, now there's people saying that.
Yeah, unless it's a stolen car. Yeah, of course.
I don't, I don't know what they're saying.
Unless it's a stolen car. Yeah, I mean, we're counting on the license plate. You can't count on that today.
I mean, you know, now there's question if that woman is the woman they're saying because it's grainy. So this is where is the, is the nature of the whole trial system, how you prove what has happened and you have to go through the correct. All that.
But I mean, yeah, no, I get it, but the the best proof is that picture of a face. You can't, you can't, you can't argue that.
In his mayor.
Can't argue that.
I mean, never get a perfect picture of the face. I'm very sure.
But, yeah, that's, that's true. Yeah, depends on, depends on how the depends on how the cameras aimed. It all depends on what you do with the camera. Listen, you could spot something on earth from a satellite and we don't need that kind of camera, but but you can get a camera that would get that face. I mean, I guarantee you that because I look at that every day. So I mean, I'm just saying, you can do it if you want to do it, but if you don't want to do it, you don't want to do it, but I.
We don't want to do it. We're doing the best we can.
The time.
With the time element and we're happy to help in any way that you, you know, everybody.
Well, I think we move the box to where it's on camera for a face.
I'm sorry?
Move the box.
We can't.
Why not?
Okay.
You can't on both of them.
We're not going to get anything. So if we move the box to the other side, then the age, that angle of the camera will not even pick up the license.
We'll move it by the PD outside. Don't want to do it, huh?
Whatever. I don't know if you have the authority to tell me where to move the box. I have no idea, but if you would like me to move the box, I will work for moving the box, but I don't think that that's necessary. I think people, we have put it out in all the absentee ballot information that there is a ballot box available in the circular driveway. So it it's up to you. I mean, up to the council. I would have the council to vote on it. If you, if you think that by moving in front of the PD, that that will deter.
What's on camera? And the face. It's on camera.
I I don't know if I can get a camera on the ballot box in front of the PD and.
It's there already. Yeah. From what, from what I checked into, but but again, I I, you know, I don't know. I mean, I'll ask everyone.
Yeah, I mean, it, can I, can I say something?
Yeah, Donna.
If it's, if it's more secure or if it's possibly more secure, we should at least look at that option, I I would think. I mean, if we don't have to install a camera, we can always put a sign up saying that it's in front of the PD. It's not like they have to go to the next town over to drop off their ballot. I think it's something that we should look at. There obviously has been fraud. Um, and and everybody deserves that vote and it should be honest and upfront and I think that we should at least take a look at it.
No, what what all, what all have you said? What did you say?
You issue the absentee ballot. So you know how many absentee ballots are out there, right?
Yes.
So if the number comes back that you issue, I don't understand.
There, even in issuing absentee ballots, right now, currently, the ballot is given a serial number. That is set up through, and then it is listed into the state system. The number is assigned to that ballot. If, for some reason, we came back with a I I gotta go through the whole system. When that ballot comes back, I have to scan it or put it in. If something wasn't right, it's going to tell me that this isn't working right.
Right.
I know that there's, you know, and it's a nationwide thing, but our absentee ballots are not a hundred percent, no. But they're pretty secure and it's better in a small town. This is one of the things I have really and truly fought for, that the small towns have a better handle on the ballots than sometimes the cities. Because they get into all these size, the apartment buildings and everything else along those lines. And that is tough and I understand that. But at the same point, we want everybody to vote. We want people to have the ability to cast one vote for whoever they would like to have serve them. But I I understand the concern. I I and I appreciate it. I just think that for this election, we need to keep things the way it is. We already put out the information that the ballot box is in the circular driveway. I am very concerned about moving it in front of the police department because of where we told people that they could drop it off. And the other thing is what we had worked with is to, two reasons why the ballot box is on the island. One, because it was in the way of snow plowing when we had it on the other side, which I know we're not going to have a snowstorm hopefully in two days. I just condemned it to like a major.
Now we're gonna have a blizzard, Kate.
Blizzard, like we did a couple of years ago before the election.
Yeah, we're.
But the other thing is for handicapped accessibility. Are, you all know for the most part, you've all been, you know, running elections and everything. A lot of the people that want absentee ballot is because of physical disability illness. So this way, they don't have to get out of the car and do that whole thing. Now, there's another part that, of course, uses it because they're going to be out of town or whatever, or because they're afraid of sickness. So I I understand that too. But I I just think that, and I'll work with whatever you guys want me to do, but I just think for this election.
So let me just ask you.
Not, I can't imagine that this is going to come down to like a five vote difference.
And I don't mean that, but it it's not.
Going to be that.
It's, it's not about that. It it's really about the, to me, it's about the integrity of the process, but let me ask you this. So the lady that dumped all the ballots in the box in Bridgeport. But let me ask you this. They would be numbered too? So so there should be no question as to what happened, right?
The issue, I think the issue with what happened.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just curious, yeah.
It's limited on who's supposed to be returning the ballot.
Oh. Oh.
Whether they go to the ballot box or the post office.
Right.
Now, if they come into my office.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Cause only the person voted, right, who, how do you, only the person whose ballot is, or can they have somebody drop it off for them if they?
Oh.
Yeah. Go ahead, tell them, I'm just curious.
I wonder. So if you come in and you.
Listen, the people that are gonna defraud the place know this already, so whatever, but yeah.
Like, if you walked in with your wife's ballot.
Yes.
You looked at it.
Yeah.
We would have said, I'm sorry, is this, you know, who is this?
Yeah, yeah.
So for you have to find the back of it.
Right.
If you bring it in person.
Yes, okay, right.
That's all good, so that that way we, we can attest that it was delivered in person by somebody besides that person. That doesn't work that way necessarily for the ones that go into the ballot box.
Sure.
Or to the post office.
Right, true, yeah, cause no.
So just go to the post office.
Right.
And drop it off.
Right.
All right, but again. I I, from what has happened before in that city is that. It is somebody who goes around and collects ballots, and they go to other apartment house.
Yeah, they collect them, yeah.
Oh, you know what, all you guys.
Yeah.
I I'll take care of your ballots for you, you know, in fact, even when you're 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 know, you're filling them out, if you need any help, I'll help. That's one reason why we went to supervise ballots at Commonwealth Home.
Is it still ten bucks?
Am I out of line on any?
Yeah. Not tonight, anyway, no, I'm just kidding, Kate, just kidding. No, 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 it's all good discussion.
It's also for um like supervised balloting at Commonwealth Home.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was, I mean, I grew up with politics, my father was involved in politics. Yeah, and my father knew um Art Powers knows my, knew my father.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it was, they all knew each other.
Yeah.
You know, Governor Dempsey was a personal friend of the family.
Yeah.
All these things, that's how you, and that, the um, the Commonwealth Homes were an issue.
Sure.
And they really were, because people would assist.
Right.
And now they try hard where they have one from each party go, and they are, you know, they monitor it rather than.
Yeah.
So yes, there there, and I think sometimes that's what people think about when they see some of these things that happen. And some of the things that happened in the past.
Right.
So we try to make it better, we try to make it, you know, more correct for people.
Yeah.
And 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 that whole.
I know you're trying to do the best, I get it, I, and we know that, we respect that, we appreciate that. Charlie?
I agree with Kate for this election.
Yeah.
I feel it's secure, we got the camera, you know, somebody wants to change their license plate and this and that.
Not that they would, I I don't.
We're not in Bridgeport, we're not in.
Yeah, yeah, Bridgeport's a little bit of a different spot, no doubt.
I have great faith in our town clerk's ability.
Yeah.
Spot an anomaly, she knows the town, she's been here for years, she knows how the votes come in, if there's something odd, she's gonna. See it and then research it, you know, I have confidence in her, in her background with it.
And this is the mostly the mayor's election, right? I mean, I'm talking about the one, I'm not saying that others don't count, but others. Uh, by the party, I mean, it's already slaughtered.
Need to be some charter changes with all that stuff too, in my opinion, but whatever.
Well, yeah.
Whatever.
That didn't work.
That's how people changed it, I don't know why they did that, but whatever, it's okay.
And you know, I can't prevent somebody from dropping it off.
No, of course not.
Favor or put it into the mailbox.
I don't think that's what we're worried about anyway.
Right.
I think it's different.
Yeah.
Than that.
And I and I appreciate, and I think it's an important conversation to.
Yeah, 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 well, in light of what we just saw, and before our eyes, down the street from us, you know, down the street, down, you know, a few miles away. I mean, I understand it's a city, which is a whole different.
And and having an election month instead of election day is a whole new thing for us.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it is.
We're gonna learn a lot and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess you could learn.
This election, we can't change everything, but we're gonna grow into a better system.
We are going to um come and talk to you in January about the new election.
Oh, yeah, the whole new thing.
There's a lot of changes going on in there, and I think in the form, we're finding out as we go. But at some point, you need to have a conversation, there are costs associated with it, and also.
Right.
Change the way we do business, especially if it's open for.
What are they extending, what are they extending it out for the new, the new one?
Oh, I think um it was the.
A month? Couple months? A year, six?
A year?
Yeah, just do it for a year.
We don't even know the candidate.
Just do it for a year, I just, just vote all year long, what the heck?
We don't know the candidate.
One person, one vote, that doesn't count anymore, right? That's silly constitution stuff, silly constitution.
So the early voting.
Someone, some people say Kate, but whatever.
Early voting because it's.
Huh?
So it it is.
To be in person?
Yeah, early voting will be.
Yeah.
How are we gonna do, where, who's that, we're, we'll get into that next.
We'll come up with a plan.
Probably not my problem next year anyways, so.
No, no, we'll, we'll come and talk to you in then.
Um, have been working on it all.
Yeah, I know, I know.
There's been quite a few meetings on this whole thing.
What happened till election day, where, and just, why just not election day and and absentee ballots? Why are they gonna extend it out? What happened to all that stuff?
I I think.
Like we, we.
Four states that didn't have early voting.
Really? So why did the others change too? What's the deal with that?
Well, you know, so and then.
Never, I'm just rhetorical, it's okay.
I know.
I'm sorry, it's just rhetorical, I'm sorry.
It's gotta be either, i- if you want.
It's alright.
Want people to vote in person, they always go on election day.
No, so that's what absentee ballots are for.
So then.
It's worked for how many years?
So.
How many years have we had that? Yeah.
This is to be hopefully where it's a little more.
I I'm not, I I'm just joking with it.
You have people voting in person, which is what I.
Yeah.
And people, some people want it, you know, so that's the whole idea with that.
And vote in person longer, I mean, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I I mean, you know, that, there's a lot of theories on that, one way or the other.
Put in your social equity number and vote on your computer.
Well, we won't go there, but.
No.
Yeah, well, I'm sure that's headed down, I'm sure that's down the road somewhere, but.
There's no way to, I I mean, technology has not been.
Yeah, so I thi- I think we're, we're good, we'll, we'll let it, yeah, it's beaten, it's still breathing a little bit, Jeff, I think I wanna, I wanna. I wanna, I wanna, yeah, miss, miss, miss horse there, miss horse lady. Get it?
We good to set up for this month and Kate will move the stuff.
I'm I'm disappointed we couldn't get the camera done, that, I I think you could get a camera done in a day, but that's just my experience in. Having a hundred and fifty-five cameras, but that's okay. We'll let it go, I guess, that's fine, anyway, all right, that you could buy cameras off the shelf tomorrow, I could go buy a camera. I could find you a camera, I'm just telling you that, but it's okay, I have a person that can install it too, probably in a day, but that's all right.
Oh, you do?
I'm sure I, he could get it done in a day, yes, same.
Bring the person in, we'll install.
All right, I I'll, I'll explore that, I'll explore that, yes. I'll, I'll check on it, I just think it's the safer way, I'm, I, we, we're looking at it on T V every night, and you know, I'm saying, oh, we can't even see that. I didn't, I didn't, and I didn't know, I gotta say, and maybe that's my fault, I didn't know that we weren't looking at, I thought the camera was on that other side, but it was, we moved the box though. Right, cause when the box was on the other side.
Camera was not there when you had.
It wasn't there, I think we added the camera later, right? Yeah, yeah, recently, right, right.
We didn't have camera as before.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 I know it's before Bridgeport, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do a Bridgeport.
No, and it's a good thing.
Where we were, you know, so the thought process is that a preventive measure is to have a camera done. But that is fairly recent.
Yeah, no, I get that, I I get that, but it's, you know, it's obvious what happens, when you don't plan for the worst.
Right.
That's what happens.
Right.
Like, you know, but anyway.
But I I mean, if you can get somebody in here to help us, that would be great.
I'll find out, yeah, I will find out, thank you so much for the discussion, I think it was a good discussion. Probably a bit too long, but I'm sorry, uh, anyway, so, uh, all right, where are we at? Uh, and thank you, Kate, I know you worked diligently, I don't, I. I know you're, you do the right thing always, so I. Thank you for that, you do.